Seriously? I tried to have a stand phone. Niko is Chris, rock star. On a come, on a come, on a come, on a damn come, make we talk. Cause see, at this point, it is a crime, it is a flipping crime to be illiterate. It is a crime to be a flipping degenerate slash imbecile. And I'm gonna say categorically, this point, Donna Gao has a lot of degenerates following her. I don't care. Even Erica, Lord God, let me play, lemme, 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 lemme play, lemme, lemme play the theme song. Let me play the theme song. Wait there, I wait there, I wait there, I wait there. Lord God, I have it somewhere. Where is it? Um, I have it, I have it, I have it, me have it.
Michelle Bradshaw.
Michelle Bradshaw.
Call Auntie Bob, we have been drunk.
Achoo.
One woman, me have been a car, me have been a name of drug class, I like. We come out here and dip your mouth.
Achoo.
Krasmat.
The only Krasmat is you. The Krasmat is Ono. Paranak, 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 share, hello? Pause, 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 pause. This one clearly was so fast for those super chats, she said any, anything. But you know, I'm here to educate some idiots. I'm here to educate some damn degenerates. And yes, my teeth them don't oak. Yes, I fear there might be a little bit discolored, but shit, them don't oak. Oak a bit? No, thank you. Mm mm. Anyhow. Let me educate these people, cause clearly, education, you see, you see, all, you see, all these years, all these years, when your parents sent you to school, a lot of you, the time, on a, on a day at school, I take man and I look woman, on a she actually sat down and, and take in the things the teacher was teaching me. Perhaps it would have put you in a, in a better position. Personally, yesterday, you would, you, you would have been able to differentiate the difference between X, Y, Z, A, B, C, E, F, and flipping G. Donna, I am a combo, I'm a combo, Donna. Do you see, Donna? I put your award on my thumbnail. Yes, girl, I put that shit on my thumbnail. I did Plank, Plankah. I put Donna's thumbnail on my, on my damn, Donna's award on my thumbnail. Yes, I flipping did that shit. Come a bad like that. Me bad like that, me a bad pickney. Donna cannot copyright me if she bad, if her admins are bad. Copyright and see, if you not go back up in a, in, in not one, not two, not three, not five, not seven, not nine, but ten business days, it affy. Go back up my page. Hello? The joke is an Ono. Black screen, Erica, all of you, I can tell, all of you, on a head up, Donna Batuall, hello? Stop sniffing Donna Batuall and come back out on earth. Come back to the earth, come back to the earth. Hello? Tammy Fay, all of you, Mixi Pam, Tammy Fay, come back on earth, come back on the earth, okay? Only, you people have been living in Donna Gao's asshole for far too long. I'm sure up there must, hello, I'm sure up there must smell a little bit rancid. Cause we know say, I'll do the update, on a come out, I do the packet, come out, I do the packet, cause I'm telling you. Only can catch sepsis. The longer, the longer you stay in there, you catch sepsis. Donna. I am a combo, girl, I'm a combo, Donna. How do you feel? Plank Nation, oh, on a feel too, on a damn feel. More on the phone commerce, we can share me damn livestream here, I coming, my girls are coming. It on, it, it on, it on, oh, it on now, it on. Lord God, my daddy call me, Lord God, Lord Jesus Christ, my daddy call me, oh Lord. I wish she have more than one number, she have more than one number for me, so I'm sure she got through to me. Watch Donna Shay, hey, hey, why? Donna, let me speak in a monotone voice. How do you feel? Let me bring in a few decibels. Donna Gao, how do you feel? That, that, that old man, that old flipping geriatric, how do you feel? You know, I was, I was not gonna come in here, I was not gonna come in here, and I brush my tongue, say pink, I scrub, scrub my teeth there and put on my nice clothes. Oh Donna, I'm wearing all, I'm wearing all black today. Donna, I am wearing all black today for your funeral. Donna girl, I'm wearing all black for your funeral, girl. Scam Madonna, I wore black for your damn funeral in big foreign. You will never, Donna Gao, you will never be acknowledged by no governmental entity in no foreign lands. Galanga Jamaica, met Jamaica, acknowledge your first, shit. You know, it is a crime to be uneducated. Erica, Erica is Erica and black screen, all of them, Ono, Ono, you people are leading the pack of what dons is like. And at this point, Ono should have stayed at damn school, Ono should have stayed in school. Send me your number so I can, I can send you clips for, oh clips, clips, clips for the, okay. My number, hmm, don't want get my number. Hmm, you know, I'm gonna put up my number, just in case, you know, I'm call, I'm put out on the toolset, Paris hold our thing, I mean, no say. I know for a fact, a lot of you, a lot of you, I will put it on the toolset, me no say, me no say no I put it on the toolset. Let's be real, I am sure, I am sure, on, I am sure, say, Ono, while putting on the toolset on this damn award thing. You know, I was asleep, I was asleep last night, you know, I was on there when I was sleeping, I mean, congratulations, mister, what on there? I walk a congratulations, so me jump, me, me jump out of my sleep, I jumped out my sleep, and I saw this man. Oh, what's that, I get that hard. So now, I am so glad, I'm so glad she ended, she ended it. I screenshot the time, sorry, let me go back here, so, just go ten minutes before, come, you know, say after like ten minutes before, let me go back there, so. Imagine. I'm gonna, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put up my number, but on a, on a, on a, on a, don't call now, don't call now, don't say nothing now. Let me talk first, let me get my points across first, before anyone call me. Me no, I know, I don't want no distraction, me no want, me no want a distraction, when me a talk with this one, talk, understand? Planks gonna come off. At this point, I don't want no plank nation on my page. Plank nation, you, you all have been banished. You all have been banned from my page. You know why? Cause a lot of you are very much dons, and I, I, I detest, I detest, I despise dons. Being dons, it should be a flipping crime. In today's day and age, it should be, it should be a flipping crime to be flipping dons. On a come off. Planks do not come here from today. The date is the sixth of July. Ono have been banned from my page, especially the old, the old geriatric them who's up Donna go Batuall, who don't have common sense. I'm being real. I'm be very real. I'm gonna take it back, me not, me not take it back, me not take it back. Planks, on a come off, on a come off. Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me talk to people who have sense. At, at the bare minimum, them have common sense, on a come off. Planks, go over to Donna. I don't know what Donna is feeding you people. I don't know what she have feed, you know? Donna, what did you put in those cakes and those damn puddings and those, those damn juice? I don't know, cause clearly, you put something in that damn thing, but clearly, their damn brain cells have been flipping frazzled. Them damn brain cells is working on flipping air and water. It fry out, Lord God. A lot of your parents, plank nation, me chat ono, me no say, a lot of your old people, your parents are turning in their graves right now. And I'm being real. Your parents should be ashamed of you people respectfully, them be shame, I own o. What are you talking about? None of your concern, you don't know, none of your concern, hop off. Wanna take off this one, take them off, take off the one there. Take them off, I don't wanna see them. This, this one, this one is one of Donna Gao's damn dogs with no sense. Come off. No, don't delete, ban them. Well done Shay, wet, backside Shay, Shay, come and pop toy, tell him to Shay. Shay, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what you did, I don't know, I don't know what you've done to Donna. But Shay, that oak tea, where that oak tea we are color, it push, it is pushing there to go and do veneers, my ratid cough. I mean, look at my teeth, they're, they're, they're a bit discolored, but I don't give a shit, I don't give a flipping shit. This is how God wanted my teeth to stay, and I, I'm gonna die with my discolored teeth right now, yes. Anyhow, Donna is ashamed of her oak teeth, no, can we wear color oak teeth with the oco? Donna with the oco. Donna is not gonna go and get veneers. So plankah, I'm gonna get this for over, over for my birthday. Why? Ooh, Donna with the oco. Shay, let's change from oak tea now to oco. Why? I'm dead, I am. Backside me for a share, Lord God. I should be sharing, Sarri Agas, minutes ago, I miss you, I don't know, I don't know me still. I'm very extra, very, very extra, me extra bad. Yeah, I'm very extra, 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 read all about it, extra. Let's show my Facebook first. Uh huh. What my captions say again? I told you I'm streaming right, I'll ring you back. I'll ring you back, I'm streaming, I can't talk right now. What? I can't speak right now, ring you back, I'm streaming. I'll look, I'll look, I'll look, I'll look. Anyhow. Backside, incom out, I will go and wear this, Baba, I wanna go see later. What in my caption, what my captions say? Oh, scam lord, me no my caption, oh, scam lord. DMG. Award. City council. Says, dot, dot, dot. But everybody wanna run out now. What are we, everybody wanna run out right now? Imagine. I mean, no say me not, me, me, me not come off, me not come off, and I coming off a backside. Donna, veneers still won't make, you get that, right? Shay, right, girl. Shay, I'm if it tell you, I'm if it tell you. Ah, me if it tell you Shay, girl, I'm if it tell you. Or else me put Donna. On my big page, no Donna, me not, me put DMG on it backside, and the rest of page them Donna go pan that kaka, Donna. Come, Donna, you see? I'm still out here calling you scammer. You know why? Because I can prove, I Dwayne Fletcher can prove that you, Donna, you did use deception in the past to take our money. That is against the law. Donna, deception is a freaking crime punishable at the highest court in the UK, the Crown Court. This, this kinda case, in now, I got a magistrate, it a got, it a got a top court in the land, it, it will go to the top court in the land, the Crown Court. No magistrate will see this. It too big for them. This case be too big for magistrate court, right? So it's gonna go to the Crown Court. And Donna, let me tell you something. I know for a fact you are ashamed, me no say. So why is this, why, why, why is he sending me this nonsense? I don't give a shit. Donna, I know for a fact that you are ashamed. That little old goat passed the man, that little old goat passed the man. Whatever happened, it, it was done so to text shame, OTI. But Donna, do you know, things could have been so much differently if you would have played fairly and did everything by the books and not come out here and deceive people by coming out here, making up concocted stories to take our money. Donna, I am one of your recipients, I mean, I am one of your donors. I will always be up in arms against you. You know why? Because I once trusted you. I once believed in you. At no point I was out here looking for any loopholes or any kind of holes in any way, shape or form. I was not. You know why? Because I didn't fool me too. However, Ashanti was out here spewing a lot of things about you. He was saying a lot of shit about you. And even then, me, thirteen, and Gracie, we cussed him out every day. I said, this man was telling lies on you. Me, Janice Foster, AKA Kingston Thirteen, and Sharmin Grousk, on touch of grace, we cussed him out. And Matlock and all of them every day for you, because then I felt he was telling lies on you. But in reality, Donna, in reality, in retrospect, Donna, he was telling the truth. How do I know he was telling the truth? Years later, on your own page, Donna, remember you once said, if you said, Donna, you said out of your oak tea mouth, if you, Donna Gao, has wronged anyone, if you are doing any wrongs, your exact words are as follows. You want God himself, the big man who blesses everything with life, to open you up like a flipping can of worms. Donna, you got that wish. God granted you that wish. How did God grant you that wish? Let me tell you. Kwame came out and boss by your page, boss himself by your own page. He exposed himself on your own page. Why should I not listen? Mister Achoo Kwame, Kwame Achoo, when I say, I didn't know. Thought you know when I went, what, what me do? I went back, me, take me cripple self, me pitite itself, I ain't go back to your old videos. Me go way back, I scrolled, I scrolled, I scrolled, I scrolled, I scrolled, and I flipping kept on scrolling until one faithful day, me buck up in a Kwame video them, me say, let me, let me, let me scroll tonight, let me scroll tonight these, these videos for myself. Every video I went into, I saw things, Mister Backside, then, oh, blind man I do that, oh, blind man do that. Big up to Tiffany Isaacs, she made it easy for me. She or he, I don't know who's banana, maybe some man, but I don't know. That person made it so much easier for me, cause that person posted things I did not find. Donna, remember, when Ashanti came out here and exposed Kwame for climbing up that ladder, and exposed Kwame for saying he was not blind, and exposed you for saying under your breath. Kwame, Kwame, go down. Why are you saying under your breath for him to go down? Donna, why was he telling Kwame under your breath? Kwame, go down. Why was he doing that? Why, why wasn't he speaking boldly in your Chang Man vice? I said Kwame go down, say, everyone on that livestream could hear, luckily, you know? If I'm not thankful to Ashanti for anything, I am thankful that Ashanti really was going tooth, and he, he was, he was combing out everything. He combed your page down to the T. And Ashanti exposed that Kwame could see, and even me, like a idiot, did not believe him. Me cause him. Bear in mind, Kwame went up that ladder, he went up that ladder in pitch darkness, he climbed that ladder in pitch darkness. He mounted that flipping roof in pitch darkness. You turn to Marcy and Marcy, give me the light, Marcy, Marcy said to you, where you want the light for? If me came see, then hold on. How is a blind man gonna see anything? Where have I got see? What is he gonna see, Donna? In a blind again. You know, all, all those years ago, I was not listening keenly, I was, I was not listening to your words keenly to understand exactly what you were saying. I was not, I was just here, I was just there for the hype, I was there for the fuckery, and, and to see who, who you have next, that's it. I was not listening wholeheartedly to things was coming out of your mouth. And my question to you is, why did you say, Marcy, give me the light, Marcy, where you want the light for? You turn to, never afraid, Marcy, I say, if me came see, what the backside is a blind man gonna see? What the backside is a blind man gonna see? You planks are flipping degenerates. That winch is taking all of you for a ride. Donna, see you? I pray to God, if God, if, if, if God really answer prayers, I pray you will go to prison for the things you did to people like myself and other people who did not realize that you was out here deceiving them, Donna. You are a wicked Jamaican woman, Donna. I don't care. In fact, you're a flipping hoodlum, wicked Jamaican woman who helped Erica to scam thirteen million, because what I don't know, all of you are in bed together. Teeth, no likes of teeth with langbug, and Erica was a bit jealous, so you, that she was out here, a, a, a class here, and exposing me, but in reality, Erica knew what she was doing, and Erica wanted a piece of the pie too, and he gave it to her. You, Donna, he gave Erica a piece of the pie. By saying, Plankah, that's who them pretty, that's who them pretty, Plankah, that's who them pretty, on a go help Erica, on a go help Erica. You, Donna, said out of your oak tea mouth, if and when Erica feeds those people whatever money is left, Erica can keep it, I that you say. So Donna, by default, by default, you assisted Erica to scam the people them out of thirteen million. Bear in mind, you was already out here making millions, so shit, not an affair, Erica, Erica scare, while, while I got thirty million, but Donna, you don't realize, every dog have their flipping day, every dog or she dog have them flipping day out here. And Donna, your day has come, your day of judgment has flipping come, and I don't give a shit what you say, your fans are flipping idiots. Mostly old fools, on a toe damn dark, Donna robbed you. She flipping robbed you. I wanna black now, where the one I don't know. Who's this one? You sound like girl, yes, my mother, my, I bet she, I sound like a girl, yet still I speak way more eloquently than you and that oak tea, Donna. I bet you. Pronounce P-T-E-R-D. No bother. It makes no sense. No bother, you're a damn dons. I'm gonna give you word for. Listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on, don't disturb, I'm, I'm on my livestream, you're disrupting me, I don't like this. And you, you make, you make you miss my chain of thoughts. I don't chat, you stop this. I saw, I can't, I, I told you what I told you already. Find, find a way, figure it out. I'm sorry. Please don't go back. I'll call you when I'm done. Bye. Listen, I don't care what you guys say, Donna Gao deceived you people, she deceived us, and I can prove it. Donna, the time you have OT where I signed petition, you would have got, did the right thing, and got a court. I said, Your Honor, I am ready to sue X, Y, and Z, and A, B, C, D, F, G, for defaming my name and my brand. That would have been far more effective than you coming out here and say, Plankah, on a sign petition. Bear in mind, years ago, me, when I was on your side, I, we, we put out petitions for Lorraine and Ashanti, and we, we got more than seven thousand signatures, and to date, nothing came out of that one. So where about I do, where, where about I do petition for again, and have the audacity to figure, post it by your page, not one time, but two time, and this time, you get one thousand six hundred and change signatures. That last time we did it, we got more than seven thousand and nothing happened, but this time, you get, you get one thousand six hundred. What was the point, Donna? What was the point? What is the point? Donna dogs, go and suck out Donna Batuall and don't come my page with your bullshit. Donna is a thief, get over it. She's a damn thief, she's a flipping kleptomaniac, and that me say, I'm gonna take you back. I can prove my case. Whenever oak tea, Donna, ready for a court, tell her, wheel her ass, our leave person in the court, and do what she have to do, cause me, me not back down, cause I know for a fact, anything I have in my phone, anything I have in my phone against Donna, the judge will see, my cause, it is flipping just, my quest, it's flipping just, I'm in a back down. Planks, don't come here, because I'm telling her, I'm in a back down from thieving scamming oak tea, Donna, I'm in a back down. I'm backing down. Back down from what? From who? A flipping thief? None of you, none of you on here can say Dwayne has ever taken a dime or stole a dime from any of you, but me, on the other hand, I can say Donna Gao has scammed me thousands of dollars in Jamaican currency, thousands. And she did so by using deception. Deception is against the flipping law. Deception is punishable in the highest court in the land in the UK, the flipping Crown Court. Donna, if you're bad, come to England. Donna, if you're bad, come to England. I bet I get you arrested. Donna, if you're bad, come to the UK, I bet you I get you flipping arrested. Say, bet, come to England if you want. If your name is Donna Marie, go, come to England if you're bad, and that if you do, right? You planks are flipping degenerates. Your parents should be ashamed of you. On appearance, a lot of you, me no, me no say no matter I'm father dead, and I'm sure right now, they are turning their flipping graves. People out here endorsing any of the flipping kleptomaniac. Move. Shift. Back up. Damn demon people, me not back down from, I'm in, Donna, I'm not backing down. If, you know, yesterday, when I, when I played that content of yours, when it have, you're talking about this lawsuit bullshit? If I knew for a fact I was telling lies on you, I would have backed down. Bear in mind, a lot of times in the past, my come up, my car, my, my car, yeah, kinda name, right? I said, you deception against me, right? To, to, to take my money, and what did I do? I backed down, I, I, I pulled back, me back down. I backed down, right, Donna? Right? I went to my, my, my classer, my classer. I would tell him, go to my, my, my classer, my car, yeah, kind of name, and I pulled back, I said, Dwayne. You don't have enough evidence to come out against women, step back and leave her alone. And I did that multiple times, but then, then this time, me now back down from you. You hear me, lady? Me now back down. Donna Gao, I, Dwayne Fletcher, Francois Fletcher, me now back down from you. Because I can prove undeniably categorically, you used deceit, deception. Your concocted stories against people like myself, vulnerable citizens of the UK. You use that against me to suck my money and for that, Donna. I will punish you, you must be punished. You will be disgraced and you will get nothing. You will get nothing. Donna, you will get nothing in any foreign country, I promise you. Go on to Jamaica, let them acknowledge your fuss. Make Andrew Holis and your, and your then friend, where you talk about Julie Holis, tell her nothing to do this and do that. Go and let Julie Holis and Andrew Holis and then for acknowledge your fuss before you go out there to spread your wings. You know, the, the, Donna, there's a saying in life, right? You have to learn to dance a yard before you can dance abroad. I'm gonna use that, that, that phrase to put to you. You should have learned to dance a yard before you try go abroad, go dance. It won't happen. Planks on the toe damn fool, Donna rabon, yeah, yeah, she rabon to the pussy wall, she rabon up. She used deception against you people. Okay, why not sue her? Why she, why she not sue me? Bridget, why Donna don't sue me? Got ask her why she, you know, Bridget, bear in mind, I've not, I've not threatened Donna with court right. She's come out here multiple times as a plank, huh? All on the quarter coming, all no court can come. Six years on, she still out here beat the same drum, she's still out here beating the same flipping drum. Last year before Donna got America, last year before she got America, Donna say. Last year before Donna got America, Donna say. Tina Chin, you are with the first of me to sue, Ashanti know where you are, say me now sue you. But in reality, the one who she, she, she sue is Ashanti who exposed her to the lowest form. Miss, Miss Ashanti are going in her panty, him are going in her panty, him exposed in a, him exposed in a, in a panty. Right? Ashanti exposed Donna's panty, he did. You know, you, you guys are so, you guys are so damn naive. One thing I know for a fact, I do remember on Ashanti's page, he once said, a gunman by the name of Kevin. Is living in Shashana's house, right? I remember that much. And years later, years later, Donna going to the tenement yard with Shashana and Marcus, who are them living at? And that mix up started. I lick that come on and busted and said, Donna, stop telling lie. She says, stop telling lie, every time you come up here, your call, I say, clean up the place, you come up there. And that lick that to say, and she also said. And Donna, Shashana next, and the next, I feed that guy, I fight over Kevin. Miss a bomba boost joke. My crocus bag. My crocus bag. My crocus bag, are that true too? Are that true too? I never knew. I did not know, I spoke about that damn live stream on my page. Tommy Feen posted that clip, Tommy Feen, that next thief, that next kept me in it, Tommy Feen. Donna, Donna got damn pyramid ski member, she posted that video on Lick with the Brata, pan Facebook, she posted. I over the mirror and take off the video, I'm a blackboard for my own a page. Tommy Feen say I lie me a tell. Tommy Feen say I lie me a tell, me take off your page, Lick with the Brata, and my black booty pan trending drama. If I score my old video, I'm sure, I'm very sure, I'll find that content. Say I lie me a tell, I say me not go back, me not go look for. Anyhow, six years, five years later, Donna go up on our page for your five year anniversary, right? And here comes big mouth Kwame, him a scroll pan TikTok, and Sedana pull up a Caribou Show, mama. Come collect girls, while I come on, I go buy our lunch. Are true? I didn't know, think could I see? Donna, then John, them John came after Kwame immediately, and Donna sit there and pass for a five minute, then Kwame. When they think, when they think they blind. That, damn me, that English puppy, it is a fragment of his damn imagination. But if I realize, Donna already confirmed years ago that Kwame could see, she did confirm. Years ago on the flipping video when climb ladder, when she, when she said to Marcy, Marcy. Give me the light, Marcy, where you want the light for? If me came see, I that, I that say. What is a blind man to see? That winch done is a thief. Donna is a thief. You know, so I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't answer something. Someone close in my space, once said, Dwayne, you know, said, don't want a thief. Where I get your money for? I told that person some hot words, someone near and dear to me, I love that person so much, right? She say, Dwayne, this is the woman that thief, where I get your money for? Me say, nah, me tell her two hot words. Right? I did. I flipping told the two hot words. I said, leave the woman alone, she's not a thief. And then, hear me, here comes me six years later. Find, find out for myself that Donna Gao is nothing more than a damn deceiver. Planks, I'm asking a question, if you are eyes blind, you know, so nobody. Can you cook, you can cook, you can cook soups, only for a pad cover, not one but two pad cover? Only can do that, if, 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 it is said that you are blind as a bat, glaucoma, they want to damn yai. Can you or I cook food? Do you guys know? One of the, one of the wickedest illness known to mankind is being blind? Ask me why now, I will tell you. People, me I tell them, you know, so not got, me I tell them now. People can go to shit, if they ever know I need me, they can go to dirty water, piss, if you go to drinky. You know, like, cause I'm not blind, like a bat, no blind, on a car, say, not one, that, that, on a car, say, nothing at all. So people, people damn will, will treat you. Cancer is not as bad as being damn blind, you hear me? Being blind is the most wickedest illness known to mankind. Cause people will give you anything to eat or drink, and you drink and eat that because you don't know where I put in the damn mouth. You think it's a joke? Donna said Kwame was blind, yes, Kwame was cooking soups. Kwame, if I pad cover, Kwame places hand precisely in the damn sink to pick up the knife. Kwame a cut half chicken toward the finger, the finger, the damn finger, the chicken toward. They nail, they nail off the chicken, finger, the damn, the damn chicken toward. Kwame is cutting up the damn nails of the chicken toward. You know, chicken foot, the part, you, you chip out this, Kwame a cut it off. He might take up the chicken, chicken fork, the chicken for Friday, I sing, and put him on dog and I sing so, and take a nice so. How, what eyes is he using to see those things? With the two damn fool, that a trick on here, that a trick on the backside, trick on, I didn't trick me too, I was a damn idiot. I fell for Donna Gao's trickery. Right? Donna is evil. And Donna, me now stop talk about you because I want you to feel my wrath. I want you to feel how, I want you to feel, you see, you see, you see vengeance is not a good thing, but when it comes to you, Donna. I have to get you, and I'm gonna get you my own way. Whether you accept it or accept not, whether you think you've gotten with it or gotten with, or gotten away with it not. You will face my flipping wrath, I'm telling you, me now stop expose you as a thief. I bet you, you will never have the opportunity to come out here and scam anyone new again, I bet you. Keep scamming those damn degenerates, keep scamming those flipping degenerates, the one, the one we have, no. Donna, don't you see my backside? Ten story now one, ten story now damn one. Donna, do you remem, do you remember? Your, your pink party, where, where, where you look a damn peptivism on, do you remember that party? You streamed that party on YouTube, remember? You had more than seven thousand people. You had more than seven thousand people on that live stream. You did, did you see your livestream yesterday? Miss say, I walked by every, I said, well, all, all are in the comment, I, I, why, why can't I see this damn livestream? One man say, go with that now with your fake period, go with that with your fake period, Mr. Ross, we go that, we go that, big like, okay. Let me sit pretty and watch, and watch what I want. Donna got live stream drop to one thousand seven hundred, from two thousand three hundred down to one thousand seven hundred. Donna, where are the fricking seven hundred thousand? Donna, where are those seven hundred thousand followers, the ones who really was following me, PP, cluck, 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 where them gone? Donna, where them gone? Where, where the people them gone? I'm gonna ask Donna, where the people them gone? Planks, where the people them gone? Which part them gone? Then God left that a backside. Donna go, you got done here, girl, you got done, and nothing you do or say will ever put you back to where you, where you wanna go. You will not reach. No, I'm cousin, I'm cousin, I'm cousin, subscribe. I'm cousin, subscribe. No, don't delete him, don't delete him, don't delete, leave the one there. I'm cousin here. Yeah, we go in the cinema, pretty girl, you hear me, me, me I jump asleep, me I jump asleep to backside. I mean, congrats, that why I can't wait congrats for? What a congrats for, me, me jump, me jump, but I see quick. I am so glad them in the livestream, we could, we could screenshot, we, we, we wait, on me there, and go back ten minutes before them, so, okay, I saw. This is what I want, that's all. This, me this one, see what I want, I wanna notice if, 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 if people then give the award, you know, I wanted to know. I, and I, and that I flipping did know. Anyhow, let us get into the conversation now. Me chat to know out, me chat to want long enough. So I wanna start by putting up some things for you guys, and I want you guys to take your time and peruse. Peruse at your own leisure, can I find a dance? Peruse the things at your own leisure, wanna know what peruse means? Anyhow, peruse means. Read at your own leisure, the things I'm about to put up on my green screen, right? Brace yourselves. Planks, so no come up, this is plank, I no come up, I no come up, me I start calling a plaque of shit, calling a full of shit like, like, like that about the hole. I no come off, go along over there now, go on over there now, come off. I'm gonna take it up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shit up self off my live stream, I mean, also a lot of times me shit up, I lie not to, I want to shit up. Donna, I keep in a pack shit, I go in the finiam, Donna, pack shit, and I give only finiam, that's all, right now, what I found up? On a Dona syndrome, one cannot differentiate the difference between reality and fictional. Anyhow, read at your own leisure. Donna, I'm gonna see, Donna, I'm gonna see, can't cap right, go away, girl. You can't cap right, be a box set, make we start with that one here. Read. You can draw out. You can draw out, some can draw out. Just, just, I, me, me, make it true, me, me, me don't want, me don't want that one, me don't want, me don't want that one there. I could make, make coffee, you want? What did I want here? Honestly, I say, city council, right? It's a city council, right? I'm gonna read good enough, come, you know, so, you know, someone done, so I read, I wanted to read very well. Take a little time and read it, take a little time, take a little time, make, make, come out there, take a little time, take a little time and read, take a little time and read, yeah, that is. Yes, I'm gonna take a little time and read, read that one there. I'm gonna read here, baby girls and boys, read, read to understand. Anyhow, make, make a jump to the last one, make a jump to the last one. You see it? Okay, that one, that one only can see, that one only can see, let me come out there with you. All right, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read, I'm coming out, wait, I'm gonna read, read here, wait say. What is it say for that one there? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, tell me when I'm done with, tell me when, tell me when I'm done. Tell me when I'm done to read, here. I'm gonna done read. I'm gonna done read it. I'm gonna done read. I'm done. I'm gonna done read it. If you ask me, I'm done, I'm done. Then done read it, then done. Shane, I done read. Shane, I done read, come, you know, so only carry, where's the thing carry? I'm done read. I'm done read. I'm done. Tell me, it's why, yes, me not say yes it, I'm done read, I'm honestly, honestly, yes it. Oh god, then I say yes it. Anyhow, what I wanna say, yes I know, yes not, make I could take you off now. All right, done. I'm gonna read good. All right. What did that say? Wait say. Planks, I'm gonna have said, me, 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 so, me know, someone have sent, now someone have sent, what did that say? It says Donna Gao will be honoured by the city council. Donna Gao, for her philanthropic work, her humanity, her humanitarian, she will be acknowledged. Honoured by the city council. Right? Right, Planks? Let us, let us read to understand. We know so the dance, right? But I, I, I look at something opposite, honestly, honestly, I look at something opposite, right? Erica, you are flipping degenerate, you see you, Erica? Are you, I tell them all editor in a bigger editor, the fools are a little, other fools. That much further than a flipping rabbit hole. It is a crime, it should be a crime to be flipping illiterate. It should be a crime against humanity in today's day and age to don't have common sense. Common sense dictates that what was written was not what was done. I'm a blind? I'm a blind? I'm a blind? I'm not have sense? Black screen, Erica, the one I don't tell, and Tommy Feen, but when I jump, I don't want to. I don't want some bitch like for giving look of sense. Me say. Oh, the mother and the father, this one, oh, and I head back, I'm, I'm just sitting there, damn it, I'm told damn dark and flipping illiterate. At this point, you people really are flipping degenerates. What is a degenerate? A senseless goat. A senseless flipping goat and all of you, me tell you now, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna head out to that about to all. Hello, Donna? Me know say, Donna, me know say I want me but you know, me know say I want very, in a big, I'm flat, but it look a bit big, right? Donna, take them out, one, one, I say, no, come out, come out and get some ear, come out on my bottom and get some ear. So only can have a little sense. Right? Right, people, let's, let's be logical now, let's be flipping logical. At this point, the plank nation are one of the most illiterate. Degenerate emphasize on social media, cause you know? Me know so the mother, on the father, if they're dead, they might turn in an angry red card, this probably say blood finger. Homosexuality room, I lie, I tell, hello, hello, bring your bottom, I'm gonna fuck your name, your bottom, closet. Bring your bottom, make a, if I know, bring your son, make a fuck out your son bottom. That if you do, girl, shut up, block my one there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna block, block my one there. Block that one there, and block booty too, block booty maximum, block their rascal, we don't, we don't wanna eat over here, so. Come off, you chat too much, cause suck on my tool, I come off, you chat too much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, 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 I this one, I this one, I this one too. Where, 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 I like? Dwayne. You're right, Karen, Karen, you're so right, my apology, to everyone that's on here, I'm very sorry, but sometimes this, when, when, when it compromise my, my personal person. It provokes me, so I'm gonna tell him to outward, you understand? But I'll try my best to like be a good, a good, a good host. Don't provoke me, I don't, I know my mouth is very saucy, very flipping saucy, don't provoke me. Understand? Yes. Anyhow, you, you guys read, you guys read just now, right? I'm gonna read just now? Did you guys read? I'm gonna read, did you guys read to understand? Did you guys read to understand? I hope you guys understand the fundamental narrative of that whole. Poster. Whatever it is, poster, yes, you understand? Guys, double tap on your screen, please double tap on your screen.
Ona understand? Education is fundamental, ona too dark. Ona too damn dark and illiterate. You planks, me tell you, take on the head, filter down the battle wall and come back to earth so you understand the fundamental principles of life, you understand? So, president of that city council. Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me, my, my throat is a bit parched. Let me have a bit of, um, um, let me, let me, let me, let me give you a look of, look of fluids. Much better. Much better. Anyhow. Did Donna get or achieved a key to the city of Mount Vernon? Did Donna get any plaque from the, the president, the commissioner or the mayor? No, she got nothing. She got nothing. Me shall call me soon, call me soon, come, me, 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 more, 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 more and get, more and get out everything, more and get, more and get out everything. I don't want to forget nothing at all. Donna got a piece of plaque from that damn old fool who is the creator of that festival. Well, understand planks? What the hell are you guys, what the flipping hell are you guys celebrating? A flipping plaque from a damn old goat? A piece of plaque from a damn old goat, get out of here on a damn degenerate. You should have stayed in school. Now, for the guy, school go take money on the crutches and go look girls. All the shit at that school, I take it on the damn education, so they know how things were going this way. That city council, the woman, the, the president, something brown, she knew if the things that, that, that allegation that was made against Donna turned out to be true, her job would have been in flipping jeopardy. Wanna know what jeopardy is? Can't even spell jeopardy. Her job and all of her panel would have been, their jobs would have been flipping jeopardy. So I'm saying, achoo. Hello, backup, backup, backup Kingston Abba, backup, backup Kingston Abba. And that them say, and they ran the hell away. They don't get caught up in shit like that, remember me telling you? I send, I send some breather video, I send some breather video, I don't know. I got that with myself. Say, all Erica, missing all Erica, missing all the America too. I said, I said, they were box, I went out, I shanti Erica, the one out the car car. Go to the damn people them. Yeah, I did that. Donna, you will never be acknowledged by no governmental body in the UK, I mean, in, 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 in foreign. Lord God, me shall I call? Oh, Maxine. Maxine, Maxine, me soon call back, let me, let me get my, let me, let me, get me a little thing on first, me soon call her back. You wanna talk, me soon, me soon call, me call, me, me call her back. Me I call back. Yes? I'm hearing you, what's up? You not hear me? You not hear me? Lord God. Maxi, now you don't hear me? Me soon call her, me soon call her, me soon call her, me soon call her. Hear me, I hear you, what happened? Me soon call her, me soon call her, me call her back. Me I call, me I call back, me I call back, me I, I gonna call back, I gonna call back. Tell me, come over there, Max, Max, me soon, Max, me soon call her, come, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna get me damn chain of thoughts out to these damn degenerates. On what they are celebrating, what, 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 what are you got, what are you guys celebrating? A plaque from that damn fool? Him take shame, him take shame out of that aye, him take shame out of that aye. Cause I'm telling Donna was disgraced, that, me say, oh, look, me say Donna was disgraced. Lord God. Maxi, I hear me now? Maxi, I hear me now? Let me, let me text you, me, me soon call her, me soon, me soon call her. Let me text you. Me soon call her, let me, and let me get my chain of thoughts out, me soon call back. That man, him take shame out of that aye, I'm telling you, that, that old fool. He knew Donna was never gonna, was never gonna get no award, no, nothing he tried, nothing that man tried would have made that council change their decision in giving her no damn award. Or, or, or at least honored, she was not gonna get no damn honor, no honorary, no nothing, she was getting nothing. Nothing, she not get nothing. Da da da, hello, planks? Stop coming out to cursing people who sense, clearly, oh no, don't have no damn sense, you people are flipping to dance. On a dance, I'm telling you, it's, it is a crime to be a flipping dance, it's a flipping crime. Tell your children, tell your grandchildren, stay in school because education is flipping fundamental. It is fundamental, it, it is, at this point, flipping fundamental, cause ona, ona don't have none. Only waste of the time at school, go take money on the crutches and, and, and go look, woman, go bang them crutches too. Wanna show that school that they can do their lesson, damn fool. Anyhow. Miss Kitty was awarded, was, was honored the right way. Donna, wanna hear? Make a make on here, come, me can, me can, me can, my bad, my, my want to hear from the seven now, want to hear where it go? I, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna come out here and put on no, no damn story, want to hear or it go, I know it don't go. So that's why me draw for Miss Kitty, me gonna see how it's meant to be done properly. Donna got nothing. The man gear that, he take shame out her aye, cause she done, she listen, they say in life, shame and a load. What he broke neck, and that a neck, that a neck pop off in that gum, that a neck pop off in that gum, a drop at the gum, so that, that, that I try keep it up and then I stay up. Donna, nothing you try. You must say thank you, you still have them people that were there right now, right? Say, say thank you, you still have those damn degenerates with you, cause at this point, Donna, I'mma tell you. Opal told the truth, Opal said, Opal tell before, so the people that you have in your space now are ree, ree people. Ree, ree, they good to walk about and cuss, 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 that's all they good for, cuss. I mean, look at it. Oh no, you, you people, you threaten Lorraine, so Lorraine could not come to that flipping event, right? Stacy said some stuff about Lorraine too and put out a warning, yet the Lorraine, as bad as Lorraine, Lorraine say. This is America. Land of opportunities. Home of the brave and the free. Who is any of you to dictate her where she can, where she can go, I wish can, you know, I, I'm, I'm so disappointed, Michelle, I go, Michelle, Michelle, I would have wished you would have pulled up. I wish Michelle would have put, I, I wish somebody, I wish somebody talked, would have pulled up and say, yo, we are here, what I gonna do? On a fuller mode. On a, on the, on a, on, they say, you know what I'm saying? Action, not a bagamote, Lorraine full of action, oh no, a bagamote, 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 bagamote. As plank nation from today, we act, we act, I call on no, bagamote idiot, bagamote degenerates. Yes. Let her know, get call from the one. On a, on a, on a make the most threat, to the point where, on a, on a go for Lorraine, nice, she not a, she not a cost side, she not a shame. That is a public event, it is a public, a public event, which means anyone from wherever in America could have pulled up. It's not a done ago event, me show us Lorraine, me show us Lorraine now, god, if it's fried, me show what I want it, cause that is a done ago event. Lorraine don't have no business, she not, she not a business go this so. But a public one where an award might have, might potentially been given by, by, by the flipping city council. Me tell them, me say, oh no, go, just in case they, they might try say it, or this so, and be on the scene, they will get to her, oh no, go, go look, go, go look, god damn look. And Lorraine. I must commend you for pulling up Lorraine. Lorraine is a bad girl, Lorraine a bad, bad girl. Lorraine bad, wanna call her, call her name, I'm telling you, Lorraine is a bad girl. I wanna, wanna, a lot of you, you don't have the spirit, you don't have the, the character that Lorraine, that Lorraine has in her, in her arm, right? On a go where, take on the head out of that a bottom. Anyhow, planks, make a show on the order, I want to go here, me, me, me just show the Miss Kitty one, and me just show the Dana one, on a, on a, listen to the words. Listen to the words coming, coming to this damn geriatric mouth. Listen to the words coming to this damn geriatric old goat mouth. Erica, you're a damn fool, what are you celebrating? Make a, make a, make a two super chat. Hello, let us celebrate, on a dash, send out the super chat them, they won nothing, how we win? We won. We flipping one, on a win nothing, on a one piece of damn blue glass, on a go where, on a damn idiot. Listen, listen, listen to Donna's thing now, this is Donna's one. Put on a sheet there. I find me. How would I want that? How would I want that?
Dear, I wanna just say.
No, 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 we're sitting on for last, oh, sit, sit down on one there, sit down on, me, me fine, me fine, lis- listen to Donna's award. Listen to Donna's elected award. Oh, that one nigo. Wanna hear, make we hear, make, make us hear, and, 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 we, 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 we're gonna analyze the difference between Donna's and Kitty's. I wanna have sense, me also not sense, me also on a down dark, I wanna down illiterate, like the planks who have them head large up that ago, back to what? Who is so far away from flipping reality, let's be real. On a go where, Donna a thief, Donna's a flip, Donna's a thief, Donna is a damn thief. Donna go, you are damn clipped. Make a, make a supposed to cast my face. Donna Gao, you, Donna Marie Goff, from nineteen ninety V band, January twenty first nineteen seventy five, is a damn kleptomaniac, a damn deceiver, I mean, I take you back. Make we got quote, and here we do, pause the petition, so plank, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put this petition on pause now, we are got a quote. A quote, we are go, make we got a quote, and that if you do. I'm gonna tell you already, by you going to court, you will build that credibility and trust in your followers. The ones who left you, they're gonna come back, and even more that, even more are come, this second, trust me, it's gonna catapult you right back on top to another level, you're gonna say, bomb this. I'm reach us up, but you're gonna reach by winning your case. I say I'll reach. Donna, take, pay title, foolish advice. By you winning this case, it is a pusher right up there, on another, another level, you're gonna say, blow scope. Ah, oh, me we just so, oh, what I'm there, I come with my case, oh, plank nation, make a police and plank ah, plank ah. Yeah, I say I got the same song. Anyhow, this is Donna's award, this is not Donna's award, I want to go. Oh, and FYI, two people got a piece of glass for the man, a little idiot man, the old man, the damn jing bang, the jigalo. Two. Anyhow, wanna listen, wanna listen, wanna listen.
For twenty six years of committed and compassionate service to our communities. From the Caribbean Jerk Fest Team on July twenty twenty five.
What you ever say? From the Jerk Fest Team, and start with, and start by saying, from the Jerk Fest Team. Not the city council, the Jerk Fest Team. Wanna understand, do you have common sense, planks, on a, on a have common sense? Common sense dictates, me, me, I, I, I'm, I'm Michelle, maybe it's enough, me, 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 Michelle word. Michelle, I, Michelle, I your word, maybe it's right on, common sense dictates, say. This award has nothing remotely, nothing of significance to the city council. Only a idiot like the planks would think otherwise, let us be real. Only a damn degenerate like Donna Gao, imbeciles. Would see it otherwise, right? God, I watch you, Michelle girl, Michelle, I have sense. Michelle, let's be real, you know, I'm gonna be real, I feel in my heart, I'm, I was one of Donna's smartest supporters, me. I mean, I, I mean, I talk what my mouth. Michelle, ask her how, how we're so able to still so successful. Use fit a mix up, use all of them mix up, Donna Chris, the one of them, and bill the page in three months. More than thirty plus total followers in three months, I wrap that up by myself. I'm smart. On a don't have that, on a, on a don't possess those, those kind of ca- capacity or capabilities, on a don't have it. If it is smart, on a, on a do it, but on a don't do it, on a go where? On a damn fool, and shit, I'm crippled, shit, I'm a pit or a shit, I had a brain tumor, shit, I had a flipping stroke, yet still. Throughout all of those traumatizing experiences, I'm still smarter. Then not only Donna, Erica, black screen, oh, oh no, I'm smarter than all of you put together, put. Tell me, what is the meaning of honor matter payer? And spell the flipping word, Donna. Wanna spell that shit, Donna finds me a chat too, what does it mean? And nobody, nobody, nobody go Google, don't better go Google, what does it mean? On a move. Spell pterodactyl, on a move. Damn illiterate buffoons, move. Anyhow, listen the difference between Miss Kitty and Donna Gao's award, right? Let's scrutinize them both very well. Let's scrutinize and analyze both awards with common sense, right? Let's have it, come Donna, Donna, your time, come here girl, come, 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 I your time. Let's go back, let's go back to the beginning, the, the damn beginning, come back I front.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Come sir, sir, stop it, sir, go, go, go back to the front, alright.
Oh, can you, oh, endless.
See the, see the, see the old fart yeah, see the old fart yeah? See him there? See him there? Wanna see him? Wanna see him? Wanna see him? Wanna see him?
I'm next to everybody in the house. Ladies and gentlemen, none other, and then one only. Aliyah, where you go? In Jamaica, in America, in Canada, all over Europe.
Hello, sir. Leave Europe out of this. Donna Gao, Donna Gao has no footprint in Europe. The only footprint Donna Gao has in Europe is when she once roamed the street with boza gang, a flipping thief them. Boza gang them are thief, I mean, I take you back. Donna Gao, footprint is with Queenie and at her backside, klepto. Get out of here, she not a, she not a damn footprint, I saw. And no governmental body in Europe, UK or wherever, will ever acknowledge a flipping. In fact, that, that, that am why I come to England, cause I'm telling you, any day you arrive here, I'm gonna get you arrested. And this is on my life, any day you put touchdown in UK, I'm gonna get you arrested, and this is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but a flipping undiluted gospel, you, you Donna, you be arrested for flipping deception. You'll be arrested for deceiving people from the United Kingdom out of their flipping money, whether governmental or, or, however they earned it. You be flipping arrested, mark my damn words, me not playing a damn game with you, you're flipping thief, you damn goat. Anyhow, let's jump back to the damn nonsense award, wanna listen? Damn idiot. Come, come, come. Let's not forget, this is the same man that was at the radio show with Donna, this is the same man that, that was on livestream with Donna, the same man. This man has no affiliation, this man has no affiliation to the city council of Mount Vernon. The city council board, I'm telling, I'm telling you, any in party board, I go tell you, calm enough. The board, the board members of the city council in Mount Vernon are his followers, right? Daniel Brown, Edward Potate, Derek Thompson, Javon Box Hill, Kathleen Gleason. Those are the members of, of the board, no damn old goat, and on a, on a look, on a, on a seen picture? That's the president, she said no, this is the one who said Donna Gao would not be getting an award, this is her, this is her, right? These are the other board members. These are the other board members, right? Honestly, the old man? Honestly, the old man in there? Where the old man there? The old man is the creator of that jerk fest nonsense, I ain't do it. So yes, we did tell you guys from the inception, that we not care if Donna go jing bang them, want gear a what, them figure, them figure. And them for group pump and take money, I go buy one a what and get to her, and that them if you do. No governmental body, no governmental entity will ever acknowledge kleptomaniac Donna Gao, never. Me have, me have a dead fuss, me have a dead fuss going at it, cause I know what I know. Donna don't realize, Donna, Donna don't realize, I Dwayne will be a, I will be her flipping Achilles heel. Planks, let me tell you something, it's me. Me and Maxine. Me and Maxine Foster. If we combine our things together, we can put. Let me tap chat, I go tap chat, I go tap chat, let, 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 let the universe allow what, what happen, happen by itself. Me chat too much, me chat too much, me chat too much. Listen to, listen to that award. What's that, if you go big fridge? Forty, I say a lot. Forty, the joke is on you, the joke is on Donna, the joke is on plank nation, you nonsense idiots. You're selling crutches, girl, you know, I bet you, most of the girl who were at forty, they are sell, they one of them sell crutches together, one, one of them was a past crutches seller. I bet you, I bet you, yes. Birds of a, birds of the same feather tend to flock together, I promise you, one of them, them selling crutches like forty, I promise you. Anyhow, listen, listen to that award.
Let me say good evening to each and every one of you again, and let me say this to Auntie Donna this evening. The word of God tells us that if we say we love the Lord and we don't love those who are around us. We are a liar and the truth is not in us. So here, therefore, for us to look over others that tells us that we love such persons.
Just listen, listen.
For the great humanitarian work that you are doing and will continue to do. The entire team, the entire team, the entire New York, the Black House Nation. We want to honor you this evening from the entire Jerk Fest team.
Me no why anymore, only a Jerk Fest team, only a Jerk Fest team. Only a Jerk Fest team, well, and did, 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 did you guys hear city council? Did you degenerate, did plank nation not the damn dark idiot, only yes, only, only a city council? Did you guys hear from the city council? No, only from the Jerk Fest team, Donna Gao's plaque is not worth the glass it is written on. Donna Gao was looking for a key to the city of Mount Vernon, Donna Gao was looking for a proclamation, proclamation to the city of Mount Vernon. Donna Gao, Donna Gao was hoping to achieve the same things Miss Kitty got. Dwayne, you want to see flawless ring run go up from where the old hypocrite passed the car are up? Why? Hey, I died, you see last night, I swear, I, I could not contain myself, make two phone call, cause what, listen, I had, I forget if I recorded myself, I was like, eh, achoo. Yeah, girl, you can't go on there, go on the pe- go on the piece, I want, da da. Hello, people of, of, over here of Mixa Jamaica TV, on a give Donna a standing ovation for a piece of glass from, from Jerk Fest team. Donna get a standing ovation for a piece of glass from Jerk Fest team, on a right now coming, then a well done for a piece of glass from Jerk Fest team. On a right, on a right it backside, right, right, I, I would turn it off, I would turn out the live, I would turn out the livestream, on a right, Donna. Hey, da da, I'm telling you, that man gave Donna that piece of glass to take shame out her aye. Donna is ashamed. Plankers are ashamed too, but not celebrate, what I celebrate, on a move. Take a little photo down the ba- down, I take a, take a little photo out of that damn battle wall and come at the flipping earth. Anyhow, well, I'm there, me say, me not put up my number for people who aren't calling, speaker can't call now, come with the, turn on Bluetooth. Anyone, anyone wanna talk, I'm putting on a tool set, on a call here. What I'll speak, I, I gonna pu- I gonna put it, I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna put it right now. And anyone wanna talk, I gonna me put up number on a call to, on a damn call to, come listen, I say, on a one chat. Oh. Speaker can talk, girl can talk, on, over to you. You're on.
Maury Harris, um, let me say this, um, I am, I am appalled and ashamed at the level of illiteracy that exists among Jamaicans who want tell people say them have iPhone or smartphone.
Right.
I am appalled.
Right.
That so many Jamaicans who live in this country and live overseas do not know the protocols of getting a city award.
Right.
No, no, let me tell them exactly what took place. And guys, let me, let me tell you this, I know a lot of you were disappointed that I did not go. But let me explain something to you, my family was against it. And I had a conversation with my other half, was it Friday night or Thursday night, and he said to me, Michelle, you have already scored, you guys have already scored the biggest victory. And that was the victory of having the city council not award that I know. And he said to me, if they go behind your, you guys back and decide to give it to her, they are aware of what will take place. So you going does not, will not prove anything, and for me, it made sense, for me, it made sense, okay? Now, let me address Erica first and foremost. Erica, my advice to you. You say don't talk a chip, please, first of all, don't call my name, because it, 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 it irritates the hell out of me.
Right.
When I hear an illiterate buffoon like you calling, saying Michelle Bratcher, don't call my name. I cannot believe that at your age, you are so illiterate and ignorant that you cannot even use the device that you are using to call people's name to go and educate your ignorance and illiteracy, you see the pot, you see the pot cover them where they use a liquor? You should have put, you should have used the two of them and licked yourself in your head, because you are a bloody fool. My advice to you, go back to the warhouse and stay there, that's the only place where you have relevance.
Uh huh, I agree, I agree.
Now guys, let me explain something to you guys. What happened last night was that so-called pastor, and I called him a so-called pastor because he should damn well be ashamed of himself. And it is pastored like those, because me have a preach this morning. It is pastors like those why many sinners turn away from God, because the Bible tells you, let your life so shine before men that they may see your good deeds and glorify. and glorify your father which is in heaven. That pastor needs to go and have several seats, okay?
Agreed.
Donna was not honored by the city council last night.
She was not.
If Donna had been honored by the city council last night, here is what would happen. A member of the city council or the mayor of Mount Vernon
Would have done it.
Would have honored her and would have given her the key to the city of Mount Vernon. I'm gonna need for know, only make a ticky ticky where they pass Facebook and, and YouTube or run up and down like when I want piece upon a set, you need to know what protocol is. Go and educate your ignorance and illiteracy, that what that pastor expected. He had the expectation that when him go present that, that, that whatever petition to the city council, they would have renamed and indeed honored Donna and gave her to the city, gave her the key to the city of Mount Vernon. Number one, the city of Mount Vernon could not honor somebody who does not have a registered charity. Because that would go against charity rules and regulation and laws in America, charity rules and regulation and laws in Jamaica, okay, so they could not do that, that's number one. Those, those of you who called into the city council, those of you who wrote, I sent them a letter. The president explicitly outlined that due to the allegations expect they could not and would not honor Donna Marigo at the jerkfest or any other event taking place in, in Mount Vernon, okay? Where the pastor do, where, where the man do, me not call him a pastor, where him do, is take shame out, out of Donna.
Yes, he did that, he took shame out her eye, I said it.
He did not say, and he could not say, you are being awarded this piece of glass by the city council of Mount Vernon, what did he say?
Jerkfest.
The people them at the jerkfest, there's a huge difference. I am sure you all who are listening to Dwayne's lie, listen to the, 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 what he played about Miss Kitty receiving her award. Miss Kitty's name will go down in Washington DC.
Yes, in Congress, yes, correct.
Oliver Samuels, Oliver Samuels, on June twenty eighth was recognized on June twenty eighth for his contribution to Jamaican culture when he received the keys of Lord to the city of Lorda Hill, Florida from Mayor Denise Grant. Oliver Samuels' name will also go down in Washington DC. Right, which part of Washington DC Donna go name a go?
Right.
Huh? Which part of Washington DC Donna name a go?
Two done, see, I know the two done.
So, Erica, knocking two pan cup, two, two pot cover together with your dog vice. It only makes me ashamed, because you know what makes me ashamed? Because other people who are not Jamaicans will either pass by and see that and say to themselves, but these people are really backward as a third world country. Do they understand what took place as a third world country? So, what you and your followers have done have only proved that in twenty twenty five, the illiteracy rate in Jamaica and the more new Jamaicans worldwide is huge, it's deplorable, it's disgusting.
Agreed.
I am actually ashamed.
Ashamed, yes.
To be a Jamaican this morning.
I agree.
This is how much I only come social media goes, but when I have smartphone or iPhone, when I have tablet, when I have computer or when I never take a minute or two to go sit down and educate oneself, huh? And I just ask a question, because this is some idiot to run up and down with some things. I tell you now, I don't tell you have no clue who Michelle Anne Marie Bradshaw is. Me tell you, I say go Google me in a Dina and observer.
I've done that, it's right, she a top girl.
Illiterate you all are. And I don't boast about things I do, but sometime me have to talk to teach someone or something.
Yeah, she has, she has.
According to, to the, to the, to the cokehead boy, Ashanti, I am in America without papers.
Right.
Hmm? But I am in America without papers, but me go, me, me, me start an, an organized protest right in front of the Jamaican consulate, consulate in a New York, hmm? I am legal in this country, hmm? And at my job, where my boss was friends with the mayor of, of New York, Mr. Cuomo. My boss spoke to Mr. Cuomo about me and Mr. Cuomo said, but this girl needs to be in a jour, be a journalist. And invited me to do six months, six months at CNN as an intern, I mean, I have no papers.
Right.
This girl was invited to the White House along with other interns, I mean, I have no papers, huh? I work for one of the biggest law firms in New York. I mean, I have no papers.
Illiterate people.
Hmm? How stupid are you? How stupid can you all be? And, and this is the thing, this is the thing where, 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 where irritate me. It irritates me that any fool can come out and say things about people and run with it, seriously? What Ashanti needed to do was say to the undocumented Plankas, get on a, get on a, get on a, get on a self together, hmm? And if I live at eighty, what, what, what is street name in a white name, I don't remember what is street name, I just remember the number. Come on, you know, turn up other people them place, make them deal with or not. People can't be, I tell you, you people don't know my position in this country named America. Because Michelle not come out here come boast, Michelle not come out here come look accolades from nobody. We have already received my accolades and honors and I am still receiving them. This is how illiterate you all are, a cokehead company platform and chat about a shit on the run with it, hmm? Seriously? I only sit down and say to myself, but how can she be so vocal publicly? I not have no papers in this country, hmm? I have been in this country thirty plus years, I have been a citizen in America thirty plus years legally. What is wrong with you people?
It's free.
Like seriously? And the worst part of this, it is the non entities, it is the germs like Ashanti three sixty Gavin Salmon who not, who not, who not, who not, who not, who is not paying any taxes in this country, who is not contributing to America in any positive way that have the most to say. I own a little dirty keel is front, yeah, sit down and allow an illiterate buffoon to fill up her head with trash on the run with it, really? Let me educate to us some more, none of you, including that cokehead, including the who are known as Erica the landlord, can prevent this girl from speaking, I have a vote as a citizen in America. I have a vote. And my constitution affords me the first amendment right I have in this country is to speak as I see fit, the freedom of motherfucking speech. And I would advise some of you to comprehend and understand what that means. Nobody over here hates, over here or on Lorraine platform or any other platform hates Donna Marigo. We hate the thing she do, we hate what she stands for.
Correct, correct, that's right.
Because the Bible tells us that charity begins at home.
At home, correct.
And if this waste, if that waste matter called Donna Marigo had intentions to help anybody, she would have registered her charity. Ashanti three sixty, you need to sit down and shut your mouth, because you don't know the difference between registering a charity and registering a company, you are illiterate plus half.
Immilitate bad.
Every time you open your mouth, the illiteracy just flows right out.
Facts.
Secondly, Donna not have to call your name in a quota, Shanti. There is a thing called counter sue, you idiot.
And subpoena or summons.
Yourself about it.
Subpoena or summons.
And time to three sixty, Gavin Salmon are the one who came out here and opened a lot of eyes to Donna's wrongdoing. It was your, it was on your platform, Gavin Salmon that a man called in and spoke about the doings of Donna Marigo. Let me educate your ignorance and illiteracy this morning, Gavin Salmon, your voice is also with the relevant authorities.
Facts.
So, when you're going to come out here and talk about leaning on house and sue, idiot boy, never say it again, never say it yesterday. Sit your illiterate ass down and try to think about getting yourself a good defense lawyer.
And get one for Donna too, get one for Donna too.
Let me tell you something, you need to be quiet because you don't know what is in the pipeline for you. Let me educate you, Erica, Shaya, whatever the hell your name is.
Shaya.
You can be brought to this country named America for charity fraud, you stupid bitch.
Extradited.
Your name, everyone owner in Jamaica, we are running an unregistered charity that collect donation from this country named America, this one. Your names are with the relevant authorities.
Yeah, come here girls, make peace with them one day.
And we not back down.
We not back down.
And the cloud that Donna go is seeking in America, she is going to get it.
She will damn well get it.
But the difference is, she will be getting it when she is in handcuffs. Only not know what kind of handsness on a rear cup. And the mere fact, this is what I'm looking at to show you all how you're literate and backward you are. Only not looking on herself, so my own come out and say, the letter I read from the city council was fake, really? Only not looking on herself and say, no, but she could have never do that because the city council could sue her. So, if we are so powerful in our small numbers that we got the city of, the city council of Mount Vernon to set back and not honor Donna Marigo, then how much further do you think we are going? How much further do you all think we are going? That's just the beginning, that's just the beginning. All I need to go educate to myself, me hear, me hear Ashanti in, when doing a place that talk about no charity and a need for register, boy, sit your literate ass down. The government of Jamaica put into place that all charities in Jamaica have to be registered. It was not a question, it was an order.
Mandatory.
Where you get your information from, I don't know, but you need, you see the coke when you take, we are mess up your head, idiot boy. You need to go spend a couple of months in rehab and get yourself clean.
Correct.
Because you are an idiot, you are literally the big, next to Donna go, you're the biggest idiot on social media.
I'm forty, I'm bad.
So, when you think you can now switch your role and turn on and a kiss Donna ass and that makes you relevant, idiot boy, you have no clue what is in store for you, none. So, when you go come out and talk about your big up and you expose, go expose your mother.
That part.
Because if your mother had an inkling or an ounce of sense, she would have known to use a condom so as not to knock your mankind with a germ like you idiot. You cannot step to this girl, no time, no place, no where, you not have the intelligence, the education, or the common sense to do so. Your eggs looking ass down and shut up, you not intimidate this girl. So, when you come out, come talk about you are exposed and call ICE, you idiot, call ICE and who? Really? And any day you get to the point where you really find my address, my advice to you is, let me have visit. Come, tell them, me not in a, social media, we are with none of, who know? But in this country, I have the right to protect and defend myself.
Simple.
Only go, only, only, only go educate to myself about that too. Donna go should be ashamed of herself this morning.
She's ashamed.
Only we are rejoice, only need to sit down, use my smartphone, use whatever device, I have a rejoiced, but educate to the ignorance and illiteracy. Because what Donna go wanted and what the intention was when they gave her that key, if they had given it to her, was to do a scamming in America, and you know? This whole thing opened up a can of worms and these are questions that have been sent to relevant authorities too, because the biggest question they need to ask, how could members of a city council
Nominate.
Actually award somebody without any background investigation on that person. And this is for politics, words, politics and money, only think none of them really, um, respect Donna now. The argument they receive, but that Donna have a huge, huge following, so them want to make money. So, the best way for them make money was to honor her without doing an investigation, and they know does not work like that. It never take the president half an hour to send him back a message saying they are not going to honor her. I was talking to Lorraine on the phone when me see, me say Lorraine, me get a message. In a me email, less than half an hour. So, the calls they got, the email she got from me was so powerful. It never take her no time to get back to me, I say, no, Miss Bradshaw, we not honor them, we not honor her. We will not honor her to be Saturday or any other day in Mount Vernon. I own a little ticky ticky, I run up and down as if Donna gave the prize, no, Donna, it, 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 it only shows how stupid she is.
In nothing.
None of these people don't respect her, they use her because they think she have a hu, a huge following.
Correct.
One of a do now, on a little ticky ticky, and you Erica, one of a take a step back and say, but why would the city council address Miss Bradshaw in an email less than half an hour after they received my email and the calls from people, people like Dwayne and others and say to Miss Bradshaw, get rid of the allegations. You see the word, when they use allegations, they will not be honoring Donna Marigo not at the jerkfest or any other event in Mount Vernon, hmm? And all, I own a who are hide behind screen and can't show the face on a chatter bag of shit. I come to award, she got a piece of glass from the promoter, the so-called, the so-called pastor who this morning should be ashamed of himself because he is no man of God, because no man of God honors the devil's work and Donna is the devil's work. We see the videos when Donna, when people come at Donna yard for help, elder the people, or Donna deal with them because she must be the one to go out, they go recruit the recipients, so she can't go back and take away the money from them. None of, only so stupid, you know, sit down and say to yourself, but Donna work how much years? Why I went, Donna start charity, Donna build mansion on the Gulliver Banker Mountain View.
Not a mansion, a nice house.
Ask myself that.
A house, not a mansion.
Sit down and see gunman bring Julie and Julia husband to Donna to apologize. I saw something on social media, I'm gonna tell you something, every time I think about it, I am rot. But Sherika, let me tell you something, girl, let me, your day is coming when you will be justly, justly applauded. When I see some dirty drunk rock come talk about, top Sherika picture and talk about how much Sherika is a liar. Oh, Sherika wicked, the wicked one and all of this is Donna go.
That part, facts, agreed, agreed.
And she come out here and lie, cause she say, I come, she come from church and, and, oh, 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 stupid, you know, is the one, she come from church. I see Sherika pan I mean in front of a gate and a couple of back Sherika get her, she tell Sherika to get up and go and what kind of woman is that? I see Sharika upon her knee in front of her gate and a couple of back, Sharika get her, she tell Sharika to get up and go and what kind of woman is that? Huh? You are a mother. And according to you, you come from church and see a boy them have a woman, a mother. On her knees in front of your gate and the most you ever say is that you tell her to get up and go home after them box her. Say it never occur to you for tell them to leave the pe- the, the thing in their mama alone, eh? You're a liar, a thief and a degenerate Donna Marigo and your day is coming. Never say it again, the clown when you are looking at America, you are going to get it, but trust me, you will get it in a handcuff.
Correct.
This is just the beginning.
Correct.
So we not care if your plank of them or honor you, and them to honor you because them are the tiki tiki them when I have a sense. They are illiterate just like you.
Correct.
My grandmother always said, like, strong your company and it speaks volumes about who you are and that is so true.
He's another crooked.
Because when me look on some of the comments from summer, oh no. You have one near Mixie Diva, girl, whoever you have.
That's Tommy Fain.
Let me tell you something, you are not in my tax bracket. Number one, you're not in my tax bracket. You not have the class or the character, the education, the common sense that I have. Go and sit your illiterate ass down and leave my name alone, you degenerate piece of shit. Because when I look for is the mix up. None of uno, let me repeat myself, none of uno, that is kissing on Donna ass. Have anything on this girl named Michelle Ann Marie Bradshaw that can bring her down. Even when me run up and down on social media discuss politics back in the days. And I run a big platform near biases against, against crime in Jamaica, when me talk to politician, government, everybody every Sunday. And get a dead trip on my life and that not stop me, I own a little tiki tiki when I have a sense, I will stop this girl, no way, no how. When you stand for something, you remain standing, you not back down and none of uno. Uno could have chatted, Jesus come off of the cross, oh no, words not hurt this girl.
No.
At the end of the day, it may, it should only show the levels of illiteracy among all of you who serve at Donna go's speed. Because Donna take on the idiot.
Correct.
And which platform, who are the way me depend on platform could have come out and come say, if them put shit in a, in a file paper and give me my winning it. And me sit down and dig out them backside same way, that's to show you the illiteracy and ignorance among all of you. The woman outright disrespect. I wanna get up same way, anti Donna, anti Donna. Gavin Salmon, a chanting, please take my foolish advice. Make sure you can play a good defense lawyer. Because you see the day when Donna go will be brought to court, you will be right there, remember that. Because let me tell you, your voice is already out there, Gavin Salmon. So Donna could have kissed your ass little more, you could have kissed Donna ass little more, it not make a difference. As for you Erica, you came out and you said, if you're dead. Had Donna send man to kill you, like how much man she made dead, how much people she made dead already. You are going to have to explain to a judge in this country where you get that information and what you meant. So now things say you get where, your day is coming as well. So you see the pot cover them where you knock, my advice to you right now, take them and knock the two side of your head and knock out yourself. So that them put you six foot six before your time come. Because you see that, that, that thirty odd million there where you collect.
Now thirteen.
I'm giving account for it in Jamaica, but the link when I tell you, you're going to have to give account for it here.
Thirteen million speaker, thirteen.
Okay, the whole of uno, that sit down in Jamaica, running on an unregistered charity. And collecting monies from people in this country. We're going to have to answer to the powers that be in this country. Oh, no, might not answer to Andrew Wallace, but Jimmy itself, the prime minister of Jamaica. It also going to have to answer as to why this was allowed to happen. This is just the beginning.
The beginning.
My advice to you, Donna Marigo, take the piece of glass where you get last night, stick your ass down. And be quiet.
That part.
The expectation that you have, that you are going to come to conquer some country. And get clout from any government official in this country. Is a tight dream, it's not going to come true. We no business if you're like a tiki tiki them or award you. You don't care about that, I them feel awarded because of their money or teeth.
Mm hmm.
Right? But the expectations that you have, that you are going to get clout in this country. Where rules, laws and laws abide as to how charities are supposed to be run. You make a sad mistake, you have opened up a can of worms for yourself, you have no idea. What you have done.
Correct.
You not have a clue Donna Marigo, what you have done. It would have been better for you if when you came and you get your green card, you sit down and say plank of people, me go look at work. But no, oh, you get up every day and look clout, undeserving clout and accolades. After how you do people and your words out there, your lives are out there, your video. Donna, remember the one where you send the money can't come in a year name? Remember the one where, when, when you called the man from Rushmore or what did he say to you, Donna? We are not a registered KMBU, Donna, all them have to go answer to certain things too, yeah? All them have to go answer to certain things too.
They will, it's true.
You understand me? You do alive, but you come out and you talk, you have a bag of money, Paula have a bag of money, you, 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 you talk about. Make we carry back, we're putting in the safe, make we carry back at the police station, which police station and which state, which safe, hmm? And the idiot sat there and watched that and believe the, the lies that came out of your mouth. You come out, you come talk about transformer doctor and years after you come back, what comes that they weren't real doctors, eh?
Facts, facts, facts.
Yes, but explain all of that too.
Quam.
Your voice. Your videos are out there, the relevant authorities have them. And you are going to have to answer in this country. You understand me? And I thank donors like Dwayne. Maxine and others who are coming out of the woodwork and doing what is necessary. To get this done.
Facts.
And so my owner do not afraid, put the fear aside, step to the front. If you don't want to the voices to be heard. Send a text, send something.
Correct.
You understand me? Because at this point, I am not going to put certain things out there. I'm not putting certain things out there as to what we are doing. But Donna, hold up that piece of glass where you get. And realize. Lorraine said it, she said America go open you up and I ask if it not open you up.
It has, it really has.
It open you up in ways you were never opened up in Jamaica.
Correct.
And you are going to pay a price for it, you see all them old people where you disgraced. You see the old woman where you talk about say, no, make the boy them come move her, make the boy them come move her because you know. I don't know what, I don't remember the word where you use, that has been gone ahead too.
Mm hmm, I remember.
Remember the video at the live where you depend on your talk about that, anybody will come a mountain view, you know, we belong a mountain view, a pie, 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 pie. Remember that? Remember the young man who come in your yard and say my the new Cuba. And when, when the boy them run him and him go the next direction, them tell him, say, no, the next way to go and the next day them find him dead. Hmm.
Hmm.
Guys, wanna steer the trail here. The road might be long, but we are getting somewhere.
We're getting somewhere.
Matter of time.
We are getting somewhere.
Matter of time.
It's true.
All right, Dwayne.
Big up speaker, big up, big up.
Big up yes.
Big up.
Dwayne.
Big up speaker.
I hope at this point you will never turn back.
Speaker, let.
Know you have a soft heart and me know, even somewhere deep inside of you. You still feel some affection for this one because that is who you are, you're a loving, giving person.
Speaker, let your heart not be troubled this time, we're good now, we're good now, we're good now. I am great now.
All right.
I promise you, relax.
All right, guys, bless upon yourself. Erica, like I said, the time you take a come out a call, people name, people, people name. Who you're not in a them class or category because Erica, you can't walk in a man's shoes, period. You cannot walk in, you are nothing but a bottle of useless noise.
A bottle of stale piss.
Erica, a waste.
A bottle of stale piss.
Total waste. Find a evening class and go. I go to a church and find Jesus and make him sanctify your front. Can you come out here, come say you take more man than the sands on the beach? What kind of woman would think such things about herself, Erica? Don't call my name. Who not call my name?
Or mine.
But you don't have the class, the character, the education, the intelligence or the common sense to even say Michelle.
Correct.
Yeah, you're not quabs, go have several seats and fix up your dirty life, but your day is coming too, yeah? And that's all me have to say, guys, only have a good day.
Big up speaker, big up, 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 up like seven, backside, seven, 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 seven. You are on WhatsApp, talk to me. Turn the live stream down. You on WhatsApp?
How you doing?
WhatsApp, you good?
Yes.
Talk to me.
I want to, I want to say something to that scream.
Mm hmm. Turn, turn the live stream down in the background.
I just passed over there.
Wait now, turn, wait, wait, turn it, turn the live stream down, you, you're listening to the live, turn it down and talk.
Hold on, hold on.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Talk now.
Yes, I heard him over there say that Donna Marigo.
Mm hmm.
Didn't say that she was getting an award from the council.
She did.
Want to say to him, he's lying.
She said it, I had, I, I have, I have the things.
I called the council myself and I spoke to the lady in the office. And I asked her, what are you guys, um, um, giving, um, Donna Marigo award for? She said to me that they out, they withdrew the award, the certificate because of the amount of.
Allegations.
And cause that they are getting and the, and the, um, the mayor's, um, office. Is a respectable office and they don't want to be in any dispute.
Mm, dispute, yes, correct.
The certificate.
Mm hmm.
So I should tell whatsoever, I know that Donna Marigo wasn't gonna get the, um, the certificate anymore.
Mm hmm.
So that is for Black Screen who said Donna didn't say she was getting any certificate from the council.
Oh yeah, I hear you.
They are ashamed, they are ashamed.
Shame, oh no shame, they're ashamed for true.
Them shame, them shame.
Bad. They are ashamed.
That's all I, I hope, I hope he'll get that.
Him get it, man.
But I only say it because she's done a want to send us a little further, Donna did say it and she was gonna get the award.
Let's, let's, let's shut him a little bit more, we're gonna shut him down. Thank you caller.
So that's all I have to say to you later.
Big up, thank you. Black screen, Donna said as follows. Mount Vernon NY, beloved Jamaican philanthropist and social media influencer. Donna Marigo, affectionately known as Auntie Donna, will be honored, will be honored. By the Mount Vernon City Council for her unwavering commitment to commu- to community upliftment. Transparency and integrity. The recognition will be presented on Saturday, July fifth during the second anniversary. Annual Caribbean, whatever she said. Maxine, talk to me, what's up?
Li- listen, Dwayne, I wanna say thank you to Michelle and yourself.
Big up.
Cause I.
Make a big little super chat.
Me to do certain things.
Yes.
I'm just tired and fed up of the whole thing and I, my, my thing on Donna is not accusation.
It's facts, facts.
There are facts, I have my receipts to prove it, do you know I'm going through depression, anxiety, you name it. For these years because of Donna and her flakotirans.
I know, I know very well, yes.
Um, under doctor's supervision and everything because of her. And when I make that call, it wasn't a call because I hate her or anything like that. I'm just tired of everyone out here and even.
Maxine, you're gone. Your connection is gone. Maxine, internet is gone, we can't begin to tools, tools.
It didn't get nothing from the city.
Yeah.
She did not get nothing from the city.
Nothing.
Our friends in here weren't together.
As they should.
And the calls are not done, the emails are not done. And I just wanna thank you guys for the little bit of information that I got and what I have done with it. Cause it's not over, as you know, I'm in Jamaica right now and certain things and evidence that I need to present. She will not be getting, I, I told you guys years ago. That she have to remember the wrongs then that she had done to people like myself. I'm not asking a question, I'm not, I'm just telling the facts of what she had done to me. So when people did it across me and going with themselves, oh no, only they make it bad for Donna. Oh no, only they make it bad for her and she's going to, 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 to come to her senses when she had to face.
When it's too late.
Cause she had not faced the music yet, you know.
She's gonna realize it's too late.
Her to do all the, who you had wrong, go around and make it right for them. Because you have not make it right, you, you big on bull and things, so you're big on bad. And trust and believe, if I have to team up with even my worst enemy. To show a lot of you out here some sense, I will. Because remember, I've been telling you guys, I have the blueprint. I don't have the T F P to, for, for all's and allegations and all of that bullshit, I have the blueprint. You understand? And you won't be getting no award from nobody, nobody. Whatever awarding you or your partnership, they give it to you, no city. I'm a citizen of the United States of America. I'm a whole, whole smart little. You understand? So when you exploited me, you and your daughter, because remember. Miss Gou, that I have all the receipts from your daughter. Paula, some Adam, I said Miller. Some other people who collected my money on the false pretense. And you walking around telling people that you have a registered charity, you don't have no registered charity, go register your charity. Go register to think about it, cause if you think they not go pull up back to them back money, you make a sad mistake, go register your charity. But Dwayne, I know you have your head on your body right now.
It's on, it can't come off.
If we have reached.
It can't come off, it can't come off. Mister Maxine, it can't come off, it can't come off, full speed ahead, Donna teeth, facts.
And just do what you gotta do and not pay them no mind, do what you gotta do and Michelle, thank you very much. They are there listening to Dwayne.
Big up Maxine, big up, big up. Listen, one thing I do know, I'm gonna tell you guys, this is one thing. Donna has done enough damage, right? Donna. Donna don't realize, I'm telling the truth, I am gonna be a, I'm gonna be a flipping Achilles heel, I promise you. Me, Dwayne, with the help of others, I'm gonna fuck her up. I promise you, anything Donna has come in, she deserves it. I never, I had faith in her. I never wronged her, Donna was the one who wronged me and all of you, right? And it still has the nerve to come out here and promote people to be dragging babies amongst some other things. Why should I sit back and let those things continue? No, it's time Donna faced the flip. It's time she faced the flipping music and the music show flipping face, wait Donna. Your days are numbered on here, that much I can promise you, you'll see, you'll learn. Anyhow, must go now. Big up on yourself. Be the type of someone who's on the live stream with me, I appreciate you, whether you like or like not, I appreciate you. Whether you commented or commented not, I appreciate you. Whether you commented or commented not, I appreciate you. Whether you give me a super chat or super chat not, I appreciate you. We are in this together. Plank or plant not, we are in this together, Black Screen, you can't clone me out. Black Screen, take your head for the battle, take your head from outer Donna and a plank of shit and battle wall, do you hear me? I'm not afraid, I never was, I liked her, but now. Those days are not avoided, can't come back, she wronged me. Anyhow, big up yourselves people, I make to a phone call now, I must go. Take care. Bye. I wanna bring up the likes, my likes will look forever, anyhow. We'll come back later with a, with a, another livestream. Take care, bye people, out.